I'm going to call to order the March twenty seven, two thousand and twenty five meeting of the Lexington Planning Commission. And the first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Does anybody have any changes that they would like to propose? I do have a question for you. The over here on the the resolution two thousand and twenty five dash zero two. Does that need to be part? I mean, we have to make a an emotion and a second and vote on that, correct?
Right, but we just thought it would be under an item five A.
Okay.
Since it's part of the mini warehouse, it's just the text amendment resolution to initiate for that item.
Okay. All right, that's fine. Just wanted to make sure about that. Okay, then I need a motion in a second.
Move approval of the agenda.
Second.
All in favor.
Hi.
Opposed and motion carries. Next item is approval of the minutes from the March thirteen, two thousand and twenty five meeting. Does anybody have any comments?
I saw, I think there should be, it should be B instead of by under the fourth line.
Page three.
Yeah. It says, request such research by done. I think it's be done.
Yes.
But that in under B, in the sort of in the right in the middle of the page.
This part, the start of the sentence is ultimately, there was a general agreement to request such research, and it should be be done. I was excited that I even caught it, honestly. I'm usually not the person that catches anything like that.
Well done.
Okay, then if there are no further comments, changes, motion and second.
I move we accept the minutes as presented.
With.
As amended, yeah.
My second. All in favor.
Aye.
And opposed, and the motion carries. Okay, moving on to citizens' comments on matters not on the agenda. If anyone in our audience would like to come up and make a statement about something that is not specifically already going to be covered on the agenda, you're welcome to do so now. And I am going to close that section of the agenda as there are no folks who are coming up. And moving on to new business. The first item under new business is the annual zoning ordinance amendment Z O A two thousand and twenty five dash zero two for mini warehouses. So can we have a staff report?
During your last meeting, you had a good discussion about many warehouses. And then when it wrapped up, we had forgotten to ask you to perhaps review and consider the resolution to initiate. This is simply a way for us to start this process so that we know how it was started when we look back twenty years ago. So it's also one of the warehouses, it says it doesn't really bind you to any to actually adopting anything or any specific language is just stating that you resolve to start a zoning text amendment. So if you would like to consider that, and then I'll continue.
Yes, indeed.
The
So we are talking for everybody on page six. So hopefully, we've all read through if there is somebody who would like to make a motion and a second to adopt this resolution. This is just to sort of start the process.
I'm I motion to adopt this resolution two thousand and twenty five dash zero two.
My second.
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed and motion carries. Okay. Moving on.
I'm gonna actually cheat a little bit and go back to the minutes from the last meeting. So there was a consensus to go ahead and go through use and design standards to develop those for mini warehouses. There was support for proceeding with just the multi-story only option. There was also some consideration not talked about depth about perhaps not allowing multi mini, sorry, self-storage or mini warehouses at all. So that's still a consideration perhaps. And then to encourage a smaller footprint and to emulate the look of a multi-story residential office building, there were support for that. There was also support to strike the high-quality vinyl out. So that's been done. And then also an agreement for outdoor stories to be prohibited. So if we look over going on page seven, just a quick review. The existing language that we have in the middle of the page, that's the definition for mini warehouse. And I've got a little note here, we could potentially also add in that they have to be multi-story if we wanted to, it's not absolutely necessary. But then that would cover if somebody were just to look at the definition that they would understand quickly that we don't allow single-story mini warehouses if it goes forward this way.
Sorry, where would the multi-story be?
We could weave it into the definition.
Okay.
Then your matrix, where this is their current matrix, mini warehouses are only listed in the C two zoning district as a conditional use. And then over to eight and nine with all the red underlined strike through language. The major sort of structural change here was we had use and design standards, and then we had specific ones for multi-story. If it were to be a multi-story building, then I think we had five or six different ones. Since it's only going to be multi-story, we had to go back and make some changes. So that's what you see in the strike through. Just quickly go through the first one and then perhaps go through these really quickly. And please interrupt me if you have questions. So eleven point three point sixteen A, all storage for mini warehouse storage facilities shall be within a completely enclosed building and the outdoor accessory storage of motor vehicles, trailers and recreational equipment, et cetera, on the same site is prohibited. And then we had some in B that was just you cannot have a separate business out of one of these storage facilities.
Is it, is it worth noting that people should not be storing illegal items?
Or is that? I presume that's covered somewhere in the police department section.
One, one would think, but I was just reading that. I was like, you never know.
Looking at several others, I don't think we had that language in anybody else. It's not that we can't add something like that, but I'm not sure that we picked up on anything similar in other sample languages.
Right. It it's probably overkill.
And then posting contact information so that if there's an issue, we have that information, no tenant identification signs again. I can't operate spray booth or paint booth or something out of these and have my sign on the fence up front, you know? That's not going to be allowed. E, the one that says accommodations for a live-in manager shall be permitted. I put a question mark, that's sort of a placeholder for me because we had one person suggesting that perhaps that's not appropriate. But I think that was the only comment that we received on that one. So therefore, it's just a little note for me. A good bit of info proposed language was struck through again to focus only on the multi-story buildings. F, the mini warehouse, multi-story structure designed to emulate multifamily or office buildings, single-story facilities are prohibited. And also you have here, we could include some of that again in the definition if we wanted to sort of cover both sides. Then G, and please again interrupt me if you have questions. This idea of making the building, if it's going to be a multi-story building, it can't just be a blank wall. It has to have some sort of decoration or feature that makes it look as though it's perhaps a little bit of something else and not just totally a blank wall. And appropriate design techniques. And I think we had a little bit of conversation that we didn't want to put too much information to give a designer some latitude, but also give them some direction that we didn't want, just a plain blank wall. Gain access in H to interior hallway. I'm not sure why H and I are also at the internal corridor thing, but where we pulled from, they had it in both locations. So we just kind of left it in there. Loading docks shall be from the rear or side of the building, but not facing residentially or parks and open space zone property or any public street. I think we threw in parks and open space because the one parcel that is directly behind sheets, as an example, is directly across from the cemetery, which is parks and open space. So we just want to have a little protection there because that is a vacant piece of property. And it's one that could or is likely to be developed, not necessarily with mini warehouses, but just likely to be developed. And then in K, we start getting into items specific to design. And I won't cover all of those. But happy to answer any questions. Oh, one last thing, sorry. I didn't do this last time either. But we have in your packet also sections from the entrance corridor overlay because a lot of the, all of the C two zoning districts are automatically in the entrance corridor. So we just wanted to provide you what we have in other sections of the zoning ordinance here so that you have it all together. In addition to the landscaping standards on page eleven, because we do have some for parking lot landscaping already baked into our landscaping section. And then there was a specific question about off-street parking, so we provided that as the calculation on page thirteen. And then we also threw in because there were some questions about setbacks of buildings, if I remember correctly. So we also threw in the lot requirements table on pages fourteen and fifteen. And then we passed around three photographs at the last meeting, and those are included on page sixteen. Happy to answer any questions.
Is the parking the three parking spaces plus one for each hundred storage units? Is that pretty common? Is that something you got out of it?
That's ours, but I don't know. We didn't go back and see if that's common or not, if that's the question, if that's typical for others or not. But that is something that we already had in our code. Happy to go take a look if there's a question of whether or not that's sort of typical or atypical.
Okay. Anybody have questions or comments?
Arnie, maybe a silly question, but I think I brought it up before the other meeting, but is there is there an advantage to the city to allow many storage units in C two? I mean, maybe that's a silly question, but I guess, no, not a silly question. I mean, I know a lot of especially small historic towns with very limited property in city limits, maybe don't necessarily allow them in the city limits, even C, even something like C two, I mean, that belong maybe more in the county or where there's more space. Or is it just to provide convenience for people to get into their storage units? Or I guess I'm trying to understand the logic of why it's even allowed in C two.
I don't recall specifically when we went through the zoning text update. How we came and I don't even have the old code with me here to tell you if it was already in C two. So lots of things were pulled forward that we already had, and then we also certainly changed a lot of items. I can't remember the history specific. But was the question whether or not being advantage to the city to have them or not to have?
To to have them, I guess. Is there a benefit to the city to allow this?
Well, I think it's, you know, it's like most uses, there's a need for them. But then it, my mind anyway, there was a question because we had two inquiries about single story. And then if you think about what we had in the have in the comp plan that says officially use the remainder of the land that's available. It doesn't say highest and best use, but you know, should fully utilize what you have in my opinion, for what it's worth. That's not accomplished by a single story. So that's why this was brought up, but Lexington is rather small.
Yeah.
We don't have much land left over and that use can certainly be provided very close to the city and still provide that service for our residents.
Okay, so like location conveniences coming to play when it comes to C two rather than having to be you know, miles out of town or whatever, I guess, is it's really the reason we're looking to.
Where appropriate, I think we also want to provide uses that people that are citizens need.
Okay. Understood. I agree, there needs to be, you know, standards and you know, design standards, if you know, we're going to allow them. I think those are very good.
I have a question on on this topic. So if if the planning commission decided that we wanted to recommend to council that we not allow many warehouses, could we sort of still work through this definition and say, this is what we recommend? Don't allow it. But if you feel like this is a really important thing to do, this is, you know, sort of have a backup plan rather than have it drop.
I think in your discussion, because we always provide them with the minutes from your discussion. So once this goes to, once you get this into a format that you're comfortable, we advertise it for public hearing, we hear the comments back from the public, you make changes if necessary. And then we always provide from that public hearing, your recommendation and the minutes, so they'll see that. But you can also emphasize that in your emotion move that we don't allow many warehouses in the C two zoning district or in the city at all. However, if there's a desire on behalf of council to keep them, we recommend that the following design standards be adopted.
Right. Okay, any, anybody have any thoughts, concerns about the about the entire design standards, use and design standards?
Like, questions for Arnie or going into discussion?
Well, do we, questions for Arnie? Okay. So we will move on then to public comment. If there's anybody in the audience who would like to address the planning commission about many warehouses. I invite you, talking to our audience, to come on up and and state your name and address. And seeing that we do not have any takers.
Someone recently.
I'm sorry. Come on up, yes. And state your name and address for the record.
Hi. My name's Natalie Egger and I live in Illinois. And I just kind of wanted to comment on the convenient statement that you made. When people are like putting their storage somewhere, I assume that like to carry that much, they're already going to be driving. And so it doesn't make that much sense to put it in the middle of town. Like, I feel like because of that, you can get away with putting it a little further out. There are already going to be in a car because how can you drop off storage just carrying around?
Thank you so much for your comment. Okay, I'm gonna, any, anybody else? Okay. Going to close public comment. Thank you for noticing. And we'll open commission discussion on this topic. So thoughts?
I don't think we need to have many warehouses in Lexington.
Okay.
I I agree, and I also agree with her comment.
It'd be pretty silly to like be carrying boxes and like the car, that's exactly what you're using the to move something or a van or something you don't. It's I I just don't think they need to be here. There's plenty of other space in Lexington is so tiny anyways. But if they need, I agree completely with like, we recommend not having them. But if you feel that they have to be, here's the conditions around it.
Yeah. Okay.
The design standards are definitely good.
Sounds
allow them.
Sounds like we're in agreement about this. Okay. Does anybody have any, so it sounds like we're going to recommend prohibiting many warehouses, however, let's make sure that if we're going to have that that sort of backup plan that we make sure that we like this language. Does anybody have any comments?
A very small one.
Okay.
I I do think the H I, the sort of the redundancy of the interior hallway thing. The second reference to that ought to be dropped, just if H clearly says all storage units should gain access from an interior hallway. And I is about monitoring. There's no need for the repetition and just might throw people off, but that's a very superficial change.
So simply striking the second sentence in I.
That would be my proposal if others agree.
Although H is then sort of grammatically incorrect. What if we just moved that second sentence in I up to H?
Sure, yeah. That's good.
With E for the live-in manager, like, is there any space in Lexington that something like this could go and would be big enough to have a live-in person?
I wasn't unaware that people lived in those.
In Colorado, there's a ton of of big warehouses and there's always somebody that like lives on the property with their family as like monitoring the storage unit. So I've I've seen that, but I can't imagine in this small of a town that that would even be possible.
And those ones that you're familiar with, are they in a separate building next to it or are they like upstairs?
It's usually like the office building, like where you would walk in, get your keys, do all that stuff. And then they would like tell you where like the garages are for the mini warehouses. Yeah.
It also had some support in, or actually the main intent of P D M U was to have sort of commercial use on the one floor and then some residential above. So I can certainly see where we're going to go to a multi, if we're recommending or if it goes forward as a multi-story, then there's the opportunity absolutely on another floor or in some configuration to have living space or a dwelling.
But the the security issues just seem a little big to me, but anybody have concerns about that or do do we want to allow? You know, housing above?
I think it would have to be quite the large. I mean, definitely, I think we've agreed that we don't like the single-story mini storage. At least the two-story, but how big would it have to be to require onsite live-in person? I don't know.
We're not considering requiring that, right, but just allow.
It just sends its best.
We're not prohibiting it.
It makes sense if it's like large enough that you want to have storage down below and somebody is using it. Like, it's their second income or like a side hustle of we're running and it's out the bottom and we live in the top like that. And at least it's better use of the space, right? Because it's, yeah, a residential place as well. So I guess that makes sense in in that instance. Yeah, I hadn't thought about about not necessarily like requiring to manage the property because it's can't possibly be that big, but just to have somebody who can live on that property as well.
And do we need to change any of the language? To reflect that. So right now it just says accommodations for a live-in manager. And it says it shall emulate multifamily or office buildings, but it doesn't then say that you could actually have people. You you wouldn't allow living like a rental. Or or even owned, you know, owner occupied.
I think if somebody were to come in with something right now, as I read this, this is just simply saying accommodations for a live-in manager and nobody else shall be permitted. But if they wanted to go to a completely different format where you do have some additional living space above or intermingled, then we're going to P D M U.
Yeah.
To that planned development mixed-use zoning district. Which is, you know, rezoning, public hearing plan, so they're going to have to actually show you much more upfront to almost, well, pretty much the site plan level before you approve it. So there there's still flexibility if somebody want to mix it a little bit more with the residential uses.
Okay. So so we can just leave it as live-in manager?
And again, it's not a requirement, as John pointed out, it's just.
Allowed.
Okay. All right. Oh, and on in item K six D, the fiber cement panel siding. Can you, instead of just indicating that it is hardy siding, can you say E G?
That's good.
Or just fiber cement panel siding and leave it alone?
Yeah, you could do that, too.
Any preference for changing the definition so that it includes a multi-story or?
Yes. Definitely.
Yeah, definitely.
Sorry, I didn't think of any proposed language. It was just an idea.
That's okay. So walls and ceilings and have a separate entrance. So does it, could it, could it just at the very beginning say a multi-story building?
A multi-story building designed to provide rental storage space and cubicles, yeah.
That works. All right, so it sounds like we are all in agreement that we would recommend that we prohibit many warehouses, but that we will have a a fall or a backup plan to recommend the the use and design standards and the definition as amended in our conversation here. Do, do I have a motion? Are we ready to make a motion? Does anybody have anything else they want to?
I, how do I motion it? I motion to prohibit prohibit the use of many warehouses with the with the incl- I guess with, but if they are required by city council to allow it as written by our recommendations with the existing or with the multi-story added in and the conditions.
Enough. Does that work?
I think so.
Do you have a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
And opposed and the motion carries, thank you.
Ask one question, follow-up. Would you prefer to see this come back in a clean version? With what we've just done, or, or do you want us to go ahead and advertise for this public hearing for your second meeting in April?
I think since we're posing it or like since we're prohibiting it, I think it could go forward and then if after that, we needed to see it as written.
Yep.
Personally.
I agree.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and make the changes, have a clean copy, do the advertisement. It'll be on your agenda for the second meeting in April as a public hearing.
Right.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to comp plan review. So this week we are on page seventeen. And we have the review of the local economy chapter of the comp plan. Um, Arnie, can we have a staff report?
And what staff has been asked to do is to provide you each of the spreadsheets that are in the back of each chapter. They provide us with their values, objectives and strategies. And we've added two status columns or yeah, columns on the right-hand side, one is ongoing and one is completed. And then we just quickly thought, um, at least in our department, what we know has been at least begun. And I'm going to use the second one there, LE one point two, encourage the development of safe, affordable, quality childcare. We've had at least two childcare initially used permits come in recently, so we're adding some capacity there. Um, so that's why that was um, cell was marked green as an example. And then we did the same thing through all the, the other strategies. And then we also realized that completed is going to be hard because as an example, encourage the developments, there's never an end to that. So we're, I'm not so sure we're going to have too many completed um, check marks in our review here.
Right. All right, um.
And also, sorry, one last thing, also invite, because we don't know everything. So if there's other work that other um, partners, agencies have done that we're not aware of, please correct us or and then we'll add it to the list. There's certainly things that are probably been started that we're just simply not aware of. And also did not do this as a wholesale inclusion of other department managers or anything. This is just what we were aware of in our department.
Yep. Thank you. Um, okay, I will open the floor to public comment if anybody in our audience has comments on this item. You're welcome to come on up. Going, going, gone. Okay, I'm going to close that public comment period and move on to commission discussion. Missioners?
I did see something that Washington Lee is offering a summer program for kids. I don't know what it is, I just have a vague memory of seeing something. Do you know what I'm talking about?
Not, not much.
No.
I, I, I know it is a thing, but I don't.
I saw it, they like, this is the year they're starting it, they're having a, a summer program for kids. Oh, you can? I want to hear about it.
Something chosen, no, oh, there was also an article in the paper. Um, they I was contacted a week and a half or so ago. Um, the question was, and I cannot remember the names of the three fraternity houses that are on East Nelson Street beside K A, sort of going down that row. But they would like to use those for, I think it's a six-week program for summer camps, I can't remember the hours. But that's an accessory use, so they can do that. And that was actually advertised, or advertised, it was a story about that in yesterday's paper. So there will be a summer camp. Uh, I think it's open to the public, if I remember correctly. Um, that they will be running sort of in the backs of those three structures.
The city's getting rid of the summer program for kids. With Pammy Dunn leaving, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Is that?
I believe that's not going to be continued this summer, I think that's true.
Yeah, sorry, is that fair?
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Is it what? Fair? F A I R, Fine Arts in Rockbridge? No. Okay. Yeah, so I know like, and it was, they didn't allow like a ton of kids, right? I think it was like up to ten, right? Like it was not very many kids that could participate in it, but that is going away. So at least Washington Lee is offering that program as well. Nice.
Um, anybody else have comments or questions? Okay, I have a couple of things. One is LE two point five and LE three point one both start with the word can, the words continue to? Which I assume means that they were already worked in, in process, and so I wonder if we shouldn't put them in the ongoing column.
Hmm, okay. I, I'm going to perhaps take the broadband one. It was, um, now I can't think of the name, but the effort for the local broadband years ago in partnership with W N L. I presume that's what that was. And maybe I was thinking more what's happened in the last five years since we but, you know, it's a fair statement, since it's continued, why do we not just go ahead and check those?
Well, it's, I mean, I do also have the question of do we, do we already do this? Are we still doing this? Um, and, and if we're not, because I, I, well, I looked in, sorry, I, I looked and saw um, that there was an affordable connectivity program that ended in twenty twenty-four. The FCC ended that, so I'm just wondering whether um, whether we're doing.
And I think it's perhaps fair also say it's not just we as in the city. And then if we look at bright speed, they've just laid a lot of fiber. So it's, it is occurring.
Okay, so then it sounds like we do need to fill that one in. And then in terms of the um, LE three point one um, continue to pursue street scape improvements, surely that's something that we're that's ongoing.
And just popped in my head, the nice little gateway um, part that was done by Main Street not terribly long ago, be a perfect example.
Yeah. So I think those, those two definitely, also, um, I don't know whether we can do this in this in, in, in this document, I guess we can. There's, there's like a harsh, a partial sentence below the, the primary part of that, it says make the downtown district safer and more enjoyable for visitors. Um, that is that just needs to get incorporated, it rather than have it be a duplicate.
Adding column that I was right that.
Okay, okay. Okay, no worries. Okay. I, I did.
Yeah.
I did. Um, although this one leaves out um,
The district.
The district safer and yeah. Um, and then I would propose that under LE four point two, connect developers, real estate professionals and lenders with resources and educational materials to help them promote Lexington to potential investors and businesses. I would say that our website does that
Okay.
at all times. And I, I don't have anything else on that one. On, I mean, on the local economy. Anybody else have anything they want to add? Okay, do we need to?
This is a working document.
Okay.
So no, we don't need to necessarily have a vote on that, we'll make those changes.
Super. Um, okay, so let's move on to item C, review of the arts and culture chapter of the comp plan. Um, Arnie, do you have a staff report on this one?
Uh, just the same as before in the sense that we went through and marked off the things that we were aware of, which maybe we're not aware of a whole lot, so only two things got marked off.
That's good. Um, okay. So, thank you for that. Um, I'll open the floor to public comment. Um, if anybody has anything that they would like to say about this particular item on the agenda. And seeing nobody rushing up, I will close public comment and open commission discussion. Does anybody have um, items that they would like to comment on, edit in this section?
Not very much ongoing.
Yeah.
This one seems to be more scarce of, of completed or ongoing projects.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's like, I, I had the same thought and that one thing we're doing here, I think it's excellent that we're doing this. And one thing that I've noticed is we're tending to focus, and as is appropriate, on what are the things that are doing? We've got, but we could also be looking at this for ideas to sort of add to our longer-term agenda, right? Where these are things identified. Right, so like consider amending the zoning ordinance to create an arts entertainment overlay district, for instance. I'm not saying we should jump right to that, but it's worth noting that.
Right.
Uh, perhaps at some point we could given that that was identified as a potential goal. We might want to take that up.
Right, and I, I think that the, the way that we would do that is that we would, you know, I don't, I, I feel like we've sort of already done that for this year, but maybe next year we would sort of have a meeting, maybe at the end of the year or the beginning of the year and say, you know, everybody take a look and see if there are things that we want to put on our hit list of things that we want to talk about in the coming year.
Totally, and so like noting them now as we go and remembering those things.
So is that something that you all could sort of take note of and say, okay, we're going to add this to the?
We can, we just ask for your backup when we
Yeah.
when next year, when we're, or when we're doing the annual report as an example, we like to say what we've accomplished for the year and then in the next year, we think we will be working on, so that might be a good place for some of those. But yeah, we'll keep a running tab.
That'd be great, that'd be helpful.
So if I understand correctly, we're taking a running tab of things that we want to consider to put on that list, right?
Yeah. Yeah. Exactly.
Thank you.
And then I just wanted to say when um, on this part that it says attract new businesses and investments.
Back on the other one.
Um, this, oh, maybe, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm, I'm okay with if you want to.
Well, I guess I, he made me think of that and that. And, and then it spurred a thought that, you know, this is already part of something we're working on. And Leslie brought up at one of the meetings that there seems to be a trend in in building owners not wanting restaurants to be below them or, or something like that, and, and maybe that's.
So which item, sorry, which one was that?
Um, well, I was just talking about attracting new business. I know, you know, myself and lots of people in Lexington would love to see more restaurants come into town and, and take some of those storefronts. Um, so if that's a contradiction that business owners aren't wanting that, I, I don't know if that would come into, to that play into that um, LE point.
When my wife was My wife was running for city council, she talked to a lot of the students at Washington and Lee. And the number, like, they don't care about how rural it is, like, the number one thing is lack of food. Number one thing, every single student she talked to, lack of food.
Well, if
Restaurants.
Lack of restaurants. If building owners aren't going to allow the restaurants to go in there.
Right, right.
Um, I, I don't know, you know, we can look at it from, from the city as far as, you know, it says provide, you know, incentives or, or how, how we could go about trying to encourage that.
I could add to that, um, one big thing that the city is considering, actually not just considering, but standing up a program is for a sprinkler system, low-interest loan and um, for giving the tap fee so that we can more fully utilize the upstairs, which has been a long-term goal in the downtown enhancement plan and the comp plan. Because we have a lot of upstairs spaces that are vacant, so some property owners simply don't want to put in the investment. They have whatever's making money for them on the first floor and they're happy with that. But one of the impediments to upstairs build out is if you have a restaurant example on the first floor, there are stringent life safety requirements and there are other ways to accomplish it, but one way to really accomplish it is through a sprinkler system. And what is it actually called? A automated fire safety, whatever the actual turn, technical term. Thank you. So if we have one of those, um, then, but people, those are expensive. So now the city is, I think, maybe the only jurisdiction in the state of Virginia going to put in an incentive program for, again, low-interest loans for the installation and then zero interest, sorry, even better. Um, so, and then also forgiving perhaps the connection fee, because that's also expensive to get that large-size pipe into the building and all that. So that is going to be an incentive for folks. What we can't sort of control is the property owner who perhaps comes in from out of town, has some sort of food service below, doesn't like the smell, doesn't like the traffic, doesn't, you know. So we're, the incentive is there, we're providing an incentive for these systems, but we can't always control necessarily what happens with the new owners.
And they're saying Isn't part of the issue, the food trucks too, and the licensing required for like Lexington versus Rockbridge County?
In what sense?
Where like people, well, like they can get Rockbridge County licensed for their food truck, but it's a separate license to get into Lexington. And so they just go on the outskirts.
Oh, we went to uh, use and design standards, just like we're doing for everything else for mobile restaurants, because we're fancy, we call them mobile restaurants. But it's, you know, the food truck, trailer and cart, so we did all that. And we've only approved two, I think, in the last five years or whenever we started it, so. And there's some misconceptions, maybe we are a little bit more regulated, but people really haven't even asked us.
Is it expensive?
No.
No.
Well, one thing that we might want to look at is there's a registration fee with our department and the business license. So maybe we need to revisit not having them pay us a natural annual registration and just doing a business license and being done. But it's not, it's not expensive. Um, and then now because of estate laws, I think I understand it, if you get a Rockbridge license this year, that's two years that you do not have to come in and get a license from, you also have to register with us and with the city, but you don't have to pay for a separate license because of something, again, that was done at the state level. Um, but what the question, if it's asked, that I don't know the answer to is are our rules and regulations just more detailed and maybe punitive or just cumbersome where that's not the case? And therefore they hover around us and don't come in. But I just haven't had really many inquiries at all. We're also able, because one of the exceptions, major exceptions that we wrote in is you do not have to get a license if you're part of a city event. So if you're a part of Rock the Bridge or, and you know, they have several food trucks and trailers and carts there, so they automatically can do that without having to get a license.
Okay. Interesting.
So, so that sounds like you're also already doing LE two point one. Assist the expansion of existing businesses poised for growth.
With the sprinkler system?
The sprinkler system. So I would
Yep.
I would color that one into. And just as a reminder, this is going to be helpful at the end of the year when we look back and say, oh, look at what we have already done with our comp plan. Um, and we can, I assume that this can be put out and, and um, on our website and so that, so that people can take a look at it. Okay, back to arts and culture. Um, so I, I do have a few questions, I, but I'm happy to have other people go if they have anything on the last page. No? Okay. So under the first one, AC one point one. Um, I'm, I'm actually wondering if we could reword that to say, so right now it says improve the accessibility and inclu- and inclusivity of civic arts and cultural facilities, venues and activities with a goal that they will be more diverse and universally acceptable, uh, sorry, accessible. And I, I just wonder if we are um, if, if this is our job, if this is the city's job, or whether this is something that we are actually working with other organizations that are I mean, I can see civic, but arts and cultural facilities, I don't think we actually have any of those that are city-owned, is that accurate?
Not that I'm aware of, but it is a good point that this isn't all just the cities to do
Right.
to-do list, it's the communities to do.
Right, so, so I, I guess I wonder if we could say um, work with local work with local organizations or provide resources about the accessibility and inclusivity of arts, civic arts and cultural. Just to make it clear that this is something that we are, that is an inclusive, that we are working with other organizations on. Does that sound reasonable to you all?
We will note that, what we, what we thought our task was currently was just to go through the status.
Yep.
And then we will get some more direction from council after, I think they hold a work session on how they want to go forward with a comp plan review, and we're in communications with the planning district commission, so we will get a work plan, a schedule drafted by them, and then there'll be some discussion about that. So we can note that for when that discussion comes back about the actual view, how changes will, or will be handled. So we'll make that down.
Okay, that sounds good. And then I was looking online, are we still doing mini innovation grants? Because that seems like something that we are doing. On the website, it lists many innovation grants, and then there are a whole bunch of them, they appear to all be through the school district.
Not aware. Sorry. That's one of those things that I'm not aware of.
So that's, that's one that I would say probably would be an ongoing.
And which number is that?
That's the first one.
Okay, so because of the mini, okay, gotcha.
Yep.
And AC 4.2, examine local regulations related to street festivals, including food trucks and so on. We did consider, we did some food truck stuff. Sorry, mobile.
Mobile restaurants.
Last year, right?
Right, we did, yeah, yeah, we did.
We did, and I can't recall specifically what we did, but we can find that out.
Right, like, it was about allowing them in parks.
Oh, yeah, parks and open space component where we hadn't had them before, and we had a couple of inquiries in both Brew Baker and Jordan's Point, so yes.
Right, and so I would, you know, hardly see that as like sort of fully meeting the required, you know, the expected objective here, but would that constitute ongoing?
Yeah, absolutely. Some of these objectives are very broad, so I think to, to address every part of them is not realistic, but to say that, you know, we're, we're working towards this is realistic there. So support affordable housing back up AC 1.2. Is this just for artists and artisans?
That's the way I took it, because we, we've done some work, at least to in the zoning text amendments, ADUs for other things to make more units and therefore hopefully affordable units, but I didn't mark anything off because I was sort of under the impression that since we're in the arts and culture chapter, that's what we're focusing on here.
So it seems like it would be very hard to say these, these units are just for artists. I don't know that we have that kind of arts community that we would have like a loft, an artist loft, where only, you know, you have to, like, the, the, what was it, the torpedo factory. So I, I wonder if, if supporting affordable housing, if we're trying to attract, if we're assuming that art artists and artisans need affordable housing to live in, and we are supporting affordable housing, it seems to me that we are in fact working towards this. That's how, that's how I would read it myself. Does that, does anybody have thoughts about that?
I don't.
I would agree, because if you're, like, if you're, we just did all the cottage housing, like, that is meant to be affordable housing, and an artist could absolutely live there, right? So I, I would consider that ongoing as well.
Yeah, it's it seems reasonable to me. I mean, it's affordable housing is showing up in other places in the comp plan, right? So its embeddedness in the arts and culture section suggests to me that the intent was really about these other things mentioned there, flexible live and work spaces and stuff, but as written, supporting affordable housing is a, is a piece of this, and clearly we are working on that. So if we're interpreting ongoing, just meaning that we're taking some action that's relevant to this goal, then that seems reasonable to me as well.
But, yes, okay, so.
As, as long as it doesn't cause us to like, not pay any more attention to the other things that are listed there. I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, I agree. I certainly agree. And I, and I would hope that we're not, you know, we're, so by having the ongoing category plus a completed one, we can see that we have not completed, and, and as you said, there is no completion for most of these. They are just things that we continue doing. And I think that it's, I don't think we ever really talked about artists and artisans in our discussion about affordable housing, but they are a, a group of people who often are benefit from affordable housing. So. Okay.
I have a question about AC 3.4. Include an arts and culture component and development request for proposals for city-owned sites when appropriate. Would that include the building that you guys are renovating? Your office?
Struggle with how that happens inside, but it could wall space, you know, yeah, absolutely, and then there's certainly property that's so underutilized outside, that yes.
When I, I lived in Indiana for a while, and they were redoing the entire hospital, and there was a contest of submit your photography, and whoever got their pictures posted in the building, they got like a little plaque and an award saying like, my picture is posted at City Hall or the hospital or whatever. It was really fun, like, I, I have two pictures at the hospital in Indiana. It's very cool, and it was, like, it was fun to show my kids, like, I, it felt very exciting, like, just random person taking photos. So it could even get the, the community involved in that, and having their features, maybe there's, you know, have a category of like, we want physical art, like a piece of furniture, we want to have paintings, we want to have whatever, and include that as showcasing Lexington within the building.
We did that on a really small scale in our meeting room upstairs. We had artwork from middle school students in there for the longest time, but it's not the same, but point taken.
And, and as long as they were residents of Lexington. Like, you would want to limit it to Lexington residents since.
And include it in the building, it just might be a fun little thing, yeah.
I love that idea.
A good point of things that we kind of forget, we, we get into, okay, we have a rehab project for our building, and then unless we go through and do a review like this on occasion, then things like that aren't always considered. Certainly not forefront, because you're thinking of structural, you're thinking of mechanical, you're thinking about our workspace, and then things like that sort of get overlooked. So thank you for pointing it out.
So now I guess the question is, is that something that you all will take back to whoever?
It's going to be one of those things that is probably going to happen after the building is completely redone, and then we'll have to see what the space is like on the inside. I'm not precluding anything on the outside, as far as I'm concerned, that's wide open. So yes, we'll, we'll try to remember in a year and a half, two years, to bring that component back, because I'm sure there's going to be space, particularly because the hallways downstairs and even upstairs to some degree are just really blank, so why not, instead of having the bulletin board with the weird stuff on it, why not have some artwork?
Right. You could even have murals. Okay, so I'm not sure that, that that is, becomes an ongoing or not. Seems like maybe not.
Just an idea at the time.
Yeah, okay. Let's see. I also had a question about AC 2.1. Encourage the development or designation of community spaces as general arts and culture center for the greater Lexington community capable of hosting both national and local artists as well as other community events. It seems to me that the library, our parks, and the community festival, and Rock the Bridge all do this. They all are community spaces that are used for general arts and culture. It's not a center.
Right.
We don't really have a center, though.
Yeah.
That makes sense that they're in other places.
Right.
Yeah.
Anyway, I would propose that we're, that goes into the ongoing category.
We could do that.
Anybody oppose that? Well, okay. Let's see, and then I had a question about the one that John mentioned about creating an arts and entertainment overlay district. I, I would love to know where that, where anybody was thinking about that and, and what that would look like. So that's, that's really probably not a conversation we need to have right now, but.
I've got the answer.
Oh, good, excellent.
McLaughlin.
McLaughlin?
Yeah.
Okay.
As you're heading out, that is our, was, or is our RLC, and, and we already have artists working in that area.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep. How far, starting where on McLaughlin?
Pretty much from the Triangle and WNL, from there down, you know, I guess.
Like down to Limekill?
Down Bridge there, yeah.
Nice. So so has that already been considered then? I mean, the zoning, I mean, an overlay?
No, this was an idea that was brought up as a new idea, as I recall, during our last comp plan amendment, when we had that significant rewrite. Again, just to consider that in the future. But it really was just an idea at the time, and we have not made any progress towards that.
So perhaps that's something that we could add on to our list of things to talk about at the end of the year. At, you know.
Yeah.
To consider.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was proposing.
If y'all could also remind, or remind us as we're going through the other chapters, if you have other items that could go into that bucket.
Yeah.
And then I I also have a question about AC 4.1, streamline the public art slash mural installation process to promote public art in the city. Do we have one of these?
No, but what I can relay is when I first started about nine years ago, there was a proposal for a mural on the side of, I'm going to call it a guitar store, but the Rockbridge Music.
Yeah.
And that it goes to the architectural review board, so I think that's where perhaps the, the, making the process easier needs to come in. And that, I think if I remember correctly, was approved, but it was never actually installed. But Main Street Lexington at the time, they were going to develop a, a process for how these things are proposed, and who is to decide, because the ARB does not want to be the decider of the art. Is this good art? Is this bad art? Just the location.
Right.
This is an appropriate location for public art, and then somebody else is going to actually go figure out, but we never got that from Main Street Lexington. So that's sort of where, at least from my recollection, where that started and has not made any progress.
Okay. All right. Well, that's all I've got. So anyone else want to add on? Okay, well then, we'll close this section. Thank you so much, everybody, for looking, thinking. It's, it's actually, I find it very affirming that, that all of these things are, are happening, but also you know, the ideas that are coming out of our conversations for the future are, are exciting to me. So. Okay, moving on to other business, zoning and planning report.
Only one item to mention, in the last planning commission meeting, you had a discussion on creep. It was something that was added, and it's well covered in the minutes. And then there was direction given to staff to look into other zoning techniques that other jurisdictions have utilized to sort of control perhaps what happens in a downtown district, in a commercial district. And then last week, city council had a quick discussion, I think in Leslie's report about the planning commission, but also in the mayor's report, and we've been given direction to hold off on doing any, doing that particular research. And for the reason that the city council will have a work session at some time, I think in the earliest in the summer, and they're to talk about institutional creep, or whichever term you prefer, to see if there's going to be any direction perhaps for planning commission. But also, there, the discussions have been started with the city manager and WNL and BMI. So the town gown sort of issue to have those conversations, because one of, I can't remember the the number of the strategy continued discussions with WNL and BMI about. So that is, at least has started. There's also a possibility that there would be a joint work session with planning commission, not necessarily on institutional creep, but just on other items. But those won't happen until council can get through budget season, so that's now into the first part of the summer. So those work sessions are likely not to occur until middle or later part of summer. So just wanted you to be aware that, yes, we were given direction, but we were also told to just hold off for a little bit until these other discussions can occur.
Right. Anything else? Okay, and I think that, that makes sense. I know you all had a, a robust discussion at the last, the last meeting, so. But I think it does make sense to have have one entity sort of focusing on it at a time, so we'll come back to it, I am sure. All right, and we do not have a city council report? Or you do, okay.
Leslie was kind enough to provide it. City council met on Thursday, March 19th. We started with a work session with the school board to review the fiscal year 26 budget needs. In the regular meeting, city council unanimously approved a conditional use permit to allow a daycare center to operate in the rear portion of Lexington Presbyterian Church. The council and city manager accepted the planning commission recommendation to make one of the four reserved parking spaces in front of Murray Hall, 10-minute parking throughout the day on weekdays. Council also unanimously approved a CUP, allowing portions of the grand building at One South Main Street to be used as an educational facility, college/university use. During the public hearing, five people spoke, three against the request and two in favor of it. After the third public hearing, council unanimously approved an amendment to the zoning ordinance to allow cottage housing developments in the city's residential zoning districts. Two people spoke during the public hearing, one person had concerns about allowing it in the historic district, and the other liked the concept. Council sends their thanks to the planning commission and planning staff for your good work. As a result of the discussion on the grand building, the city manager is arranging meetings between the council and WNL and BMI to discuss institutional uses outside of the institutional overlay. Because of those meetings, council does not want the planning commission to study town gown relations at this time. When I mentioned our work on mini warehouses, the city attorney suggested making it a conditional use, as he had seen a proliferation of them once they are allowed. And our current draft, it is a conditional use and only allowed in the C2 zoning district.
All right, thank you so much. And last item on the agenda is I am waiting for a motion to adjourn. I move to adjourn? Second, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hi.
And thank you all so much, and thank you all for, for joining us today.